Good afternoon and welcome to the 22nd meeting of the Honolulu Municipal Commission. Please silence all of your electronic devices if it interferes with our commission reporter. If you're appearing today before the commission, please introduce yourself and spell all of the names involved. And if you're appearing to testify on any of the agenda items today, please come forward, be sworn in, and identify yourself. With that being said, commissioners, let's move into the public hearing on Agenda Item Number One, Transfer Application Number 19-14652. 19... Yes, sir. Is that you?
Yes.
Please come forward. Excuse me, from TMY Corporation.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and the members of the commission. My name is Davis, counsel for the applicant. I apologize on behalf of the applicant. The representative of the applicant is delayed and she's on her way to this hearing. But she's been delayed and she's not here.
Okay, are you the authorized agent?
Yes.
Are you prepared to proceed or would you yes me up in the focus? Okay. Mr. Ry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters of support. Applicants had statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the October 25th plenary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Miyashiro prior to the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, commissioners? This is for Agenda Item...
That's your, uh...
Yep, thank you.
Your testifier list, and I will have more additional testimony.
There are no testifiers for you. Commissioners?
Motion to approve transfer application number 19-14652.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote a Agenda Item Number One, Transfer Application Number 19-14652 is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling Agenda Item Number Two, Transfer Application Number 19-15263 from SNK 2019 LLC. Mr. Lu.
Good afternoon. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. To my right is the applicant, Mr. Chi, C-H-I-Q, K-E-U-N-G-T-U.
Thank you.
He's present with counsel Wade Lu. There are no witnesses in this hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Lu. Mr. Ry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters of support. Applicants had statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the November 29th plenary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Gannabon prior to the public hearing.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, commissioners?
Motion to approve transfer application number 19-15263. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote a Agenda Item Number Two, Transfer Application Number 19-15263 is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Lu. Calling Agenda Item Number Three, Application Number 18-14368 from Koloala Spirits LLC. Good afternoon. Mr. Chairman, Eric Dill, E-R-I-C-D-I-L-L.
Ian Brooks, I-N-B-R-O-C-S.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and commissioners. This matter was continued from December 6, 2018. Public hearing kept open. This application has received five written protests, 21 signatures in support. Applicants had statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Good afternoon, sir. Please come forward. You are Mr. Trecker?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Trecker. We will have a...
Now, this is about the gentleman with the video, so I'm going to swear you in.
Oh, no, that's what I meant. Time to talk?
Yes. I'm going to run a three-minute timer.
Three-minute timer.
You swear that the testimony you give at today's hearing will be the true, false, or nothing but the truth?
I think...
Thank you.
Please introduce yourself. It's called... Excuse me, commission reporter.
Steve Trecker, spelled as T-R-E-C-K-E-R. Basically, the issue before the commission is one of safety, of course, that the safety... We don't take any pleasure in opposing this tasting room in this location, especially when it's owned by fellow Marines. But I have to say that...
Thank you all for your service.
Thank you. According to MADD, Hawaii is one of the worst states in the nation for alcohol-related fatalities. I think you, the board has... The commission has received a submission by Mr. Gary Weller today indicating there have been four fatalities and two critical injuries on this particular road, Kapaha Quarry Road. The safety on the issue on the road is presented by several situations. Number one, it's very... The two roads that lead to this area and to the, what would be the tasting room are narrow and winding, two-lane roads. There are no shoulders on the roads. Roads are frequently traveled by 12-wheeler and 18-wheeler trucks carrying gravel from Kapaha Quarry hundreds of times per day. It's subject to constant flooding. If you drive over there today, you'll see flooded sections of the road. And there's also been in recent years an increase in pedestrian runners and bicyclists on this road. My personal experience in the last... To have the last four days, including today, in 10 minutes, I saw six 18-wheeler trucks on the road, four couches abandoned by the side of the road. Again, there's no shoulders, so they're just abandoned on the side of the road. One refrigerator, two abandoned cars with the tires gone up on blocks.
One minute remaining.
I haven't heard any good reason why the tasting room cannot be located elsewhere in Kailua. Saving money on rent by putting it in a Kapaha industrial site should not take precedence over public safety and lives. And the last thing I just wanted to point out to the commission is that under Section 281-60 of the Hawaii Revised Statutes, Section... Subsection Two indicates that the commission can take into consideration motor vehicle traffic volume congestion and noise, and also whether the neighborhood board for the area where the premises is located has rendered a decision on the granting of the license. Nothing further. Thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have any questions of Mr. Trecker, Colonel Trecker? Captain.
Captain Trecker, thank you. No questions? Mr. Ry? Okay, very good. Thank you.
If there's any point else?
Yes. Is there anyone else that would like to testify on this matter? I have a miss... Oh, yes. Thank you.
I swear it in.
Do you swear that the testimony you give at today's hearing would be the true, false, or nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
My name is Donna Wong, W-O-N-G. I'm a member of the Kailua Neighborhood Board and chair of planning, zoning, and environment committee. The board and the committee took up this application because we consider it a safety issue. Because as Steve mentioned, Kapaha Quarry Road has no lights, has the lane widths are not to standard. It's bucketed by two schools, Lejardan on one side, by end of the road, and Kalahale High School on the other road. And we just felt the mixture of an adequate road that has dips and turns that people don't expect is not, is really a safety issue. The applicants came before my committee... Who needs to go? I couldn't figure this out. And said that when they were asked, you know, how... Why the tasting room there? And how they would get people to come to the industrial park, that they would have tours. They did mention it wasn't going to be tours by bus, but by app. So now that means you're inviting even more people totally unfamiliar with this road, which is hazardous to drive onto this road. I know the address says 905 Konya Muri Highway. The industrial park is located off of Kapaha Quarry Place and Kapaha Quarry Road, which are both substandard. So we just felt we had to speak out on behalf of our constituents in Kailua and try to make this as safe as possible. We have no objection to the distillery, none whatsoever. It's an appropriate business and appropriate place, which is concerned about the tasting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, please, ma'am, wait a minute.
Okay.
So you're representing to this commission that the Kailua Neighborhood Board voted against this application?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You didn't receive that letter? You should have received it from my chair. We did. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the testifier? Would the applicant like to answer any concerns that the testifier had?
Sir, appreciate the opportunity. We do not feel the complaints have voiced a concern that they didn't previously voice in the last hearing and yourself could literally address that concern in the last hearing, so we don't have an appropriate submission.
Very good. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wong. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Okay, so before I... Mr. Ry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and commissioners. We are going to run a video that was submitted by an individual registering a protest against this application, Mr. Gary Weller, and that will display on the two screens.
Thank you.
This is supposed to be from YouTube with regard to the subject road. And we've muted it. Copies of Mr. Weller's written submission was in your desk. Thank you.
Thank you for that video. I see the road has not changed in 71 years. And except for the fact that the junkyard is no longer along the side of the road, Ms. Wong, correct? And a lot of the opala has been removed. But it is the same road that we have been traveling as residents of Koloala Poco, of course, myself, over 71 years. So with that being said, commissioners, do you have questions of the applicant? Or clarification from the applicant? Or type of action?
Yes, Mr. Dill, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes. I believe at the previous here, at the previous meeting, you stated the limits for the alcohol limitation for tasting.
Yes. So for Class One manufacturer's license, we are restricted to one ounce per product of a manufacturer, you know, a manufacturer one class.
For those of us not familiar with what one ounce is, what is it?
Uh, one ounce is less than an actual, what you consider it, a serving size of a shot, which is one and a quarter ounce. According to the servers, class that you provide here takes a 140-pound individual four ounces to achieve a blood alcohol content of .08, which is the legal limit.
And each visitor to your tasting room would only be allowed to consume one ounce?
One ounce, because we only have one product.
Ian Brooks?
Yes, ma'am.
Looking at your email dated for December 20, for your letter of support to be inserted into her agenda. Quite an interesting way to gain support. I don't know if you know, but I've got, we've got the entire email now.
I'm sorry. I'm not sure.
Your email for December 20?
I do not... I apologize.
After this hearing, would you refer to it, refer to the email that you emailed over to...
I apologize.
Yeah, it's basically the support letters that were given to Lejardan's parents, which was to sign and just return it. The contents of the email on the reasoning for it is what I'm talking about. I'm not going to repeat what's said on there. But I think it's, given that this is a very sensitive issue, the same sensitivity should be applied to any opposer, opposition, or anything like that in a respectful manner.
Yes, ma'am. I apologize.
Motion to approve the date into executive session. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. We are now in the type of session. Okay, we are, we're now officially back on the record. And I understand, Mr. Dill, you would like to make a statement to the commission or, excuse me, a request.
Well, if it's necessary, we, after the video, we do have statistics if the commission would like them from the Department of Health on the amount of traffic accidents that occur on Kapaha Quarry Road. And we have that data that's provided by the Department of Health if you're interested in it to help make your decision. It does show that Kapaha Quarry is while it's a scary road to drive sometimes, it's actually not necessarily a dangerous road based on the number of accidents that actually occur on that road. So since 2012, there's been 10 accidents on that road that required emergency vehicles to be dispatched to that road. So I think that's significant because the places that were recommended by the complaint on where we should put the tasting room are actually five times more likely to incur an accident that involves a pedestrian or a motor vehicle. So that was what we wanted to provide to the board to help...
Do you have a written document that states that from the Department of Health?
We have the... So what it is, it's, you can pull it from their website and it's a free time...
That's fine. Would you please submit that for our record so that we can have that back on... Okay.
Okay.
Very good. Okay. Thank you very much, gentlemen. With that being said, commissioners, do you have any further questions of the applicant or any type of action?
I have a comment, sir.
By Chairman.
In regards to the road conditions, and I am familiar, I am also a resident of the North Waho and drive the road pretty regularly. I'm sure it is not the responsibility of the applicant to maintain the road to their premises. And I'm sure that your elected official would be more than happy to hear about the condition of the road. In regards to this license, I would like to remind you both that this is a public commission. And we have the authority to suspend or revoke your license for noncompliance with our laws at any time. That being said, I believe... Governor Bond has a motion?
Okay, motion to approve, application number 18-14368. Application will be subject to a six-month probationary period with a three-month review. Second.
Then move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Three, Application Number 18-14368 is approved with the restrictions included in Vice Chair Gannabon's motion.
Good luck and please be mindful of your neighbors.
And let me remind the applicant, please work with the community. They have legitimate concerns. And you need to address those and work so that we can all come out successfully. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to Agenda Item Number Four, Application Number 19-14658 from Stack Sports Bar LLC.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Naomi Cole, on behalf of the applicant. Present to my right is owner Lisa Pessi, Kalahale High School. Swapping has been provided to the reporter, and we have no changes to the report.
Thank you. Mr. Ry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters of support. Applicants had statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the October 25th plenary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Miyashiro prior to the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none. Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant?
Motion to approve, application number 19-14658.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Four, Application Number 19-14658 is approved.
Thank you.
Coming all the way down here to...
What's that?
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Five, Application Number 19-14778 from machine meters and gear. Good afternoon, sir.
And the officer of the department.
Thank you. Mr. Ry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters of support. Applicants had statutory requirements for the submission of this application. For the record, a summary of the October 25th plenary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Miyashiro prior to the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none. Commissioners, do you have any questions or type of action?
Motion to approve, application number 19-14778. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote a Agenda Item Number Five, Application Number 19-14778 is approved. Here I am. On the Agenda Item Number Six, Application 19-14974 from Wu Jin FNB Hawaii. Mr. Keel, seeing...
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Keep to you, chief. For the applicant to my right is young H-Y-U-N-G-W-O-K-K. He's an officer in direct duty.
Chair, into the conference of interest, I would like to ask one question. Thank you. All noted. Thank you. Mr. Ry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters of support. Applicants had statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, commissioners?
Motion to approve, application number 19-14974. Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Six, Application Number 19-14974 is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have law vote for Commissioner Miyashiro back, please? Thank you, Mr. Perez. Calling Agenda Item Number Seven, Application Number 19-14983 from Sun Park, Hawaii LLC.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. This is your I, Robert Luokan, on behalf of Sun Park Hawaii LLC. Present to my right, Mr. Sanchido Keel-C, first name S-A-N-S-H-I-R-O, last name K-I-Y-O-P-S-E. At this time, we have nothing to add to this hearing report.
Thank you. Mr. Ry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters of support. Applicants had statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the October 25th plenary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Miyashiro prior to the public hearing.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, commissioners?
Yes, Chair. Mr. Luokan?
Yes.
I'm looking at page five of the investigator license report in regards to the issue relating to the sublease. Can you address that for us, please?
Yes, originally, the sublease prohibited us from getting a liquor license. The liquor license held by Waikiki Yoko Chou entirely. But since then, we did get a consent of sublease, and we did submit to the investigator by the landlord and by Waikiki Yoko Chou saying that we can get a liquor license.
So this is no longer an issue?
No longer an issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve, application number 19-14983. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Seven, Application Number 19-14982 is approved.
Thank you so much.
No, hey, I will be here. Sit right down, Mr. Luokan. Make yourself comfortable. And we will, after this Agenda Item, we will take Agenda Item Number 17 out of order.
Thank you so much.
Let's move on to Agenda Item Number Eight, Application Number 19-14984 from Sun Park, Hawaii LLC.
Robert Luokan, on behalf of Sun Park Hawaii LLC, present to my right, Mr. Hirohiko Emoto. First, he's a manager. First name H-I-R-O-Y-U-K-I, last name I-M-O-T-O. At this time, we have nothing to add to this hearing report.
Thank you. Mr. Ry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters of support. Applicants had statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the October 25th plenary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Miyashiro prior to the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, commissioners?
Motion to approve, application number 19-14984. Second.
The move in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Eight, Application Number 19-14984 is approved.
Thanks so much.
And now we will take Agenda Item Number 17, calling, this is a request, Request Number 19-15682, A2 Waikiki Yoko Chou LLC. Yeah, okay.
Good afternoon, members of the... Good afternoon, members of the commission, Yogota. I'm here on behalf of Waikiki Yoko Chou LLC. To my right is Laura Masui, representative.
Also, Robert Luokan, present on behalf of the applicant for the area that he is resident of, I see.
Okay, thank you very much. This is a request, commissioner, so you can ask questions of the applicant.
If I could also interject, if this request is approved, we'd like it to be effective upon the issuance of the license for Sun Park. If I could also interject, if this request is approved, we'd like it to be effective upon the issuance of the license for Sun Park.
That would be wonderful, thank you.
How about we get the Commissioners? Yeah, we, we, we are the decision makers.
Absolutely, absolutely.
With that being said, Commissioners, what's your creation?
Motion to approve, request number one nine dash one five six eight two with an effective date of the. Effective upon the issuance of the license to Sun Park. Second.
Move to second, all those in favor. I, I vote I, agenda item number seven seventeen, request number one nine dash one five six eight two two. Is approved with the verbiage in Vice Chair Gunnabon's motion.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, before Mister Go to gets up, he actually has eighteen through twenty-one similar types of requests, probably with similar verbiage. Uh, if it's your pleasure, just dispose of them rapidly. You could take uh eighteen through twenty-one now. I know I didn't indicate that in my um memo. It's just that Mister uh Patausko will have to wait just five more minutes longer.
We'll make it simple, if he has any objections. It looks like everybody is in the Christmas spirit. Okay, so, did you say eighteen?
Yeah, eighteen through twenty-one.
Okay, so let's call agenda item number, these are all requests, Commissioners. Uh, agenda item number eighteen, request number one nine dash one five six eight four from Waikiki Yoko Chou.
Good afternoon, Members of the Commission, Yoko Ta appearing on behalf of Waikiki Yoko Chou LLC. To my right is Laura Masui. And again, we'd like, if this rest, request is approved, we'd like it to be effective upon the issuance of a liquor license to Shark Hawaii LLC.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant or type of action? Looks like we got a package due up here.
Okay, so to be effective upon the issuance of the liquor license to the applicant for those spaces.
Very good. Uh, motion to approve, request number one nine dash one five six eight four with the effective date upon issuance of the. The licenses to the respective spaces. Second.
Then move to second, all those in favor. I, I vote I, agenda item number eighteen, request number one nine dash one five six eight four is approved with the verbiage in Vice Chair Gunnabon's motion. Let's move on to agenda item number nineteen, request number one nine dash one five six eight five from Waikiki Yoko Chou LLC.
Uh, good afternoon, Members of the Commission, Yoko Ta appearing on behalf of Waikiki Yoko Chou LLC. To my right is Laura Masui. Again, we'd like, if this request is approved, to be effective upon the issuance of the liquor license to the applicant for this space.
Thank you, Commissioners?
Motion to approve, request number one nine dash one five six eight five with effective date upon issuance of the licenses to the. To the applicant of the respective spaces. Second.
Then move to second, all those in favor. I, I vote I, agenda item number nineteen, request number one nine dash one five six eight five is approved. And verbiage included in Vice Chair Gunnabon's motion. Move on to agenda item number twenty, request number one nine dash one five six eight six from Waikiki Yoko Chou LLC.
Good afternoon, Members of the Commission, Yoko Ta appearing on behalf of Waikiki Yoko Chou LLC. To my right is Laura Masui. Again, we'd like this, if approved, to be effective upon the issuance of the liquor license uh for that space.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Motion to approve, request number one nine dash one five six eight six with effective date upon issuance of the liquor licenses to the respective spaces. Second.
Move to second, all those in favor. I, I vote I, agenda item number twenty, request number one nine dash one five six eight six. Is approved with the verbiage included in Vice Chair Gunnabon's motion. Calling agenda item number twenty-one, request number one nine dash one five six eight seven from Waikiki Yoko Chou LLC.
Good afternoon, Members of the Commission, Yoko Ta appearing on behalf of Waikiki Yoko Chou LLC. To my right is Laura Masui. Again, if this is approved, we'd like it to be effective upon the issuance of the liquor license for that space.
Commissioners?
Motion to approve, request number one nine dash one five six eight seven with the effective date upon issuance of the liquor licenses to the respective spaces. Second.
Move to second, all those in favor. I, I vote I, agenda item number twenty-one, request number one nine dash one five six eight seven is approved with the verbiage included in Vice Chair Gunnabon's motion.
Thank you very much.
Gentlemen, is there anything else?
That was super efficient.
Don't forget to thank Mister Bukowski. Where are we going? Nine, I got it right here. So, I wanted to make sure you guys was all paying attention. Okay, so let's. Calling agenda item number nine, application number one nine dash one four seven three two from Watavi Wedding Corporation.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chairs, Members. Uh, my name is Kiko Bukowski, on behalf of the applicant. To my right, I have Kenzuke Miyazaki, spelling is K E N S U K E, last name M I Y A Z A K I.
For this matter, Mister Chair, if I could just ask the Commission to amend the agenda, currently the agenda reflects a preliminary hearing date. Of October twenty-fifth for this matter. Uh, since we do have more uh four more Commissioners here, I would ask the Commission to amend the agenda to reflect the October fourth. Preliminary hearing date, and then I'll, I'll read the other stuff into the record. Thank you.
Commissioners, may I have a motion?
Yes, Chair. Motion to amend uh the agenda. Uh, agenda item nine, application number one nine dash one four seven three two. Is amended to reflect the preliminary hearing date of October fourth, two thousand eighteen. Second.
Then move to second, all those in favor. I, I vote I, agenda item number nine, application number one nine dash one four seven three two is approved. Is amended, is amended uh to reflect the uh preliminary hearing date of October fourth, two thousand and eighteen. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
I can continue now, thank you very much. Um, this application, as we see, is zero written protests, zero letters in support. Applicants but statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the October fourth preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Gunnabon prior to the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, Commissioners, do you have any questions or type of action?
Motion to approve, application number one nine dash one four seven three two. Second.
Then move to second, all those in favor. I, I vote I, um, Mr. Gary, agenda item number nine, application number one nine dash one four seven three two is approved. Thank you. Calling agenda item number ten, these are, this is a special license application. Application number one nine dash one five seven zero three from Unified Championship Entertainment.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. Terry Lee, on behalf of the applicant, to my right is Alexander Lee, also known as Aleki. He is my son and the uh owner and proprietor of Unified Championship Entertainment. And his reason for being here is he is promoting a professional wrestling show at the Lautaro Marketplace. He'd like a special event, liquor license to serve some liquor. And his dream and hope is to bring professional wrestling back to Hawaii.
Very good. Ripper's gentleman and they're all gone. Okay, thank you very much. Um, Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant? This is a first-time application for Mister Lee. Yes.
Uh, Mister Lee, uh I assume that um Waikiki Pacific University has been consulted and agreed to that?
Yes.
Very much so.
Okay.
Question, um, on the map, I didn't see locations of restrooms for the event. If you could let us know where that is and the agreement that you have for that, that would be good. Yes, so there are restrooms on both sides of the, so this is an open area. And then on both sides are buildings. Okay, then both sides have uh male and female. Okay, and they're gonna be open for you today with the event.
I have a question regarding security. Can you walk this through the security plan? Application number twelve, security personnel.
So six is specialty duty HBB, and six are private contracted security. In addition, we'll have the normal security that all of our markets need.
Okay, you know I'm gonna ask the dumb question, but I'm gonna ask. I'm assuming these are professional wrestlers and this isn't gonna be a event. I've, back in my days, I've attended events where you mad at your friend and you can bring him in the ring. So it's not, no, you're not gonna have like audience participation or anything of that extent, right?
No, no.
Yeah, I'm just checking because I, I've never, I'm aware, I gotta ask.
This, this is the WWE type of question.
Okay, okay, just, just making sure that this isn't a grudge match that, you know. I get problems with you and me and I love a power. I gotta ask. There, good.
Very good.
Okay, motion to approve, request number one nine dash one five seven zero three. Second.
Then move to second, all those in favor. I, I vote I, agenda item number ten, application number one nine dash one five seven zero three is approved. Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
As they say, thank you very much. Calling agenda item number eleven, application number one nine dash one five seven five seven from Rotary International. Rotary Club of Honolulu. Good afternoon, Chair.
Good afternoon, Thomas Coy, T H O M A S C O Y.
And this is for a special nonprofit.
Nonprofit event.
Commissioners, do you have any uh? Questions? Thanks for being at the Hawaii Convention Center, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. And thank you for all the good things the Rotary Club does.
Thanks for letting me appreciate this.
Just one question, um, there seems to be two entities, two nonprofits involved. One on the regular license, liquor license application and one on the nonprofit is, there's two nonprofit entities?
No, it's the foundation for the Rotary Club of Honolulu, which is a corporate entity.
Okay, so it's not the Rotary Club of Honolulu?
It's the foundation.
The foundation, yeah. Foundation of the Rotary Club.
Mister Coy, I just noticed two on your I R S letter. And this may be, this may be because it's dated back from nineteen seventy-nine. It's, your tax ID number isn't disclosed on the, on the um tax exempt status. Did, did you supply proof of the tax ID number over to the Commission?
I believe we did.
Do we have a representative? We need a representative from License Bureau.
Is this one? So this is different.
Yeah, that's right. There's two different I R S.
Yeah, so this is not from, this is from Rotary and this is from.
Assistant Investigator Daniel Sato. So Vice Chair Gunnabon has a question concerning the federal tax ID number.
We have two numbers, Sato. And normally, I mean, like I, you know, for my own establishment, we have a, we have a tax exempt, uh tax exempt letter like this. But it's, and dated back in the seventies, it's actually fifty. And the employer ID number is not on this, so we have two different numbers from the federal ID number and a liquor license. And then we have a different one on a supplemental license. Did the applicant show any proof of which, which ID, which, which nonprofit is, are they operating on? For the record, the federal ID number on the liquor license is nine nine dash zero zero five three five six oh. And on top of the supplementary, we have nine nine zero seven nine seven four two.
Yes, sorry, Commissioner, um, on a normal circumstance, it would actually go through the front counter and it would do the basic review of the. Special nonprofit application. So as far as going any more details, we, we will actually ask the applicant to supply reasons.
So Mister Coy, you understand what the request is? Like I said, I know that your Rotary Club letter is very dated and old and not familiar with these type of old ones. But more recent of times, any, any federal ID number should be on top of the letter. Or if you have a determination status letter, that would work as well with the corrected federal ID number.
Are you referring to this one here?
Yeah, you don't have a bit, employer ID number beyond that. An I R.
Well, we submitted this exact same letter for a temporary one-day liquor license. June, but this year. It seemed to work for that one, but um. You're asking me to get a letter like this that actually shows our tax ID number, is that correct?
Well, what tax ID number are you operating under?
If we're operating under the one that's on the application.
So what is the one difference?
The nine nine dash zero zero five three five six zero is, that's what I'm aware of.
So that is different from your supplemental information, like from a different.
That might have been a mistake that I did, um, because. They copied off of the same application we submitted earlier. We're doing.
So it goes back to the previous question. You have two entities. You have a, you look like you have a Rotary Club of Honolulu nonprofit. And then a foundation of the Rotary Club of Honolulu nonprofit. So there's two on this application. You need one.
Yeah, this is the foundation of the event and. It is the nine nine dash zero one seven nine seven four two. Which must have been my mistake, because I'm looking at the supplemental information, nonprofit special license. That we had submitted back in June for this, and it has that number.
Uh, Mister Chair and Commissioners, since this is a, a, a June, uh plan for a, a June date. The Commission has the ability to approve the license, but we would withhold issuance pending. Correction of the documents that have been submitted and conforming things, so. So that uh Mister Coy would not have to, we could take action, uh approve the application. Uh, issuance would be uh pending clearing up some of the documentations.
Let me just clarify for the record, it's a January.
Yeah.
I thought you stated June.
Okay, yeah, I may have. It's been a long day already.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of time between now and the event.
Yes, okay, so you need me to supply you with the correct foundation.
We would need, we would need you to work with the administration to make the applicant.
And so, for clarity, the license is issued to one entity. That's why we have issue with there being two entities in this application. So you guys decide which entity is going to have the liquor license and then put it on the application.
I understand. Thank you.
That should be the foundation, they gotta have the money.
It should be the foundation, yeah.
All right, motion to approve, application number one nine dash one five seven five seven. Um, pending with the contingency that applicant will straighten out their ID numbers with administration. Second.
Move to second, all those in favor. I, I vote I, agenda item number eleven, application number one nine dash one five seven five seven is approved with the conditions. Speculated on Vice Chair Min's motion. Thank you, good luck.
Please let the um administration straighten it off.
Right at the counter. See that gentleman out there and he will um. Right at the counter, you see the gentleman out there and he will instruct you. Thank you, okay, let's move on to agenda item number twelve, our transfer application number one nine dash one five zero one eight from O'Noah's Market.
Good afternoon, commissioners, I'm in your room to have our owner's marketing. On my right is the president, G A He, the original children's investigator.
Thank you, commissioners, do you have any questions?
One question, there's only clear, it says the use is permitted with conditions, what are the conditions, out of curiosity?
Uh, the main theme and the, um, uh, the condition of appointment for the.
Condition is permit for it, okay, thank you.
Motion to approve, transfer application number one nine dash one five zero one eight, second.
Move in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote, I agenda item number twelve, transfer application number one nine dash one five zero one eight is approved. On the agenda item number fourteen, application number one nine dash one five six four two from LG Club.
Mr. Chairman, to my right is Leroy Lu, G U O. He's president of council, Wayne Luke. If this application is granted, we would appreciate a starting date of January second.
Motion to approve, temporary application number one nine dash one five six four two to be effective January second, twenty nineteen, second.
Move in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote, I agenda item number thirteen, application number one nine dash one five six four two is approved effective January two, two thousand eighteen. On the agenda item number fifteen. Fourteen. Request number one nine dash one five three seven six. From FEC, I'm a key partners LLC.
Yes, sir, due to the contract, I'm gonna have to receive myself from this, so then agenda item.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair, members of the commission, Keith, you to fill the licensee.
Chair, I'm sorry, Chair, I'm going after the case from agenda item thirteen. I understand agenda items related and.
Thank you.
We're just grouping those two because it's the same licensee, so we don't have as much.
Such a problem, yeah.
Okay, commissioners? Agenda item number fourteen. Do you have any questions of the applicant or?
Uh, yes, Mr. Keuchy.
Yes.
Um, this applicant has received several violations for operating outside of class. So I am taking a pause at considering them extending their license premises. Because it doesn't seem like they are respectful of the rules in the space they already have.
Okay, so.
Please.
My response is, is first of all, there've been two violations for operating outside of class. One, they were found not guilty, the other one, they were found guilty, uh, the circumstances were very similar. Uh, I understand what your concern is and they will comply, there's a pending application for the license to be upgraded to live entertainment that has not been scheduled yet for. This was the first step because we didn't know what would be calendar first to fill them very good.
And is this licensee not, does this licensee now have, um, an operational kitchen?
The licensee, one of the, what is being, they now have an operational kitchen, the extended premise.
Let me repeat.
Yeah.
Does this licensee now have an operational kitchen?
Yes, it does, the, you look at the extended area, the extended area includes the operation.
The extended area that you're requesting right now, I'm asking about the existing premises as approved, that license doesn't have an operational kitchen.
It does not. The preliminary hearing application for, is for the footprint that you see in front of you, which is also for the extended premises, which contains the kitchen.
Yes, and I understand that there were a couple violations and that, um, one was found not guilty. However, what I'm concerned with is that the licensee here seems to be riding the line of what they can and cannot do. And I want them firmly within the boundaries of the category and, um, of license that they are in.
I understand that, I discussed that with my client and.
They want to be operating a nightclub and now they're asking, asking to extend a license premises of a restaurant general license.
That's correct.
So are they going to actually operate a restaurant?
They are operating a restaurant, which is why they're putting in the kitchen.
Excuse me, and your client, Mr. Keuchy, doesn't think this is a serious matter to attend this hearing?
I, I asked, I called my assistant and tried, tried to find out why they didn't show up and apparently Mr. Bukowski was stuck over at the premises because he was short then.
But Mr. Bukowski just left?
No, Bryson, Bryson Bukowski, yeah.
Excuse me, excuse me, there are two, Bukowski, and I, are those brothers or, or nephew?
Their uncle and their cousin.
Cousin, thank you very much, from the island of Kauai.
Yes, yes.
Please continue.
Well, um, I understand the concern, uh, I, I'm unhappy Mr. Bukowski's not here. But as you know, with this specific agenda item, we have a problem with form, which is why I checked ahead of time. And we did let him know ahead of time and I apologize, but he was stuck over at the premises. Now, I, I've had a long talk with, you know, with both Ms. Whiting-Hardley and Mr. Bukowski about making sure that we do, we do not go over the line. Part of the problem is this has been the extension of the premises to the kitchen, it's been a long time coming because there are some issues. We're getting the building permit, there's some issues with the zoning clearance, all of which have been obtained. If you look at the investigative report, we have to submit the zoning clearance before we get the extension, the reason is because the city wants to look at what is actually built to make sure it doesn't exceed the bounds. To give you some background, this is the old Harry's Music Store.
I'm very familiar with this area, I used to live on Ninth Avenue, right behind, um, Aloha Lounge and Town Restaurant. I'm very familiar with this area, which is why I'm concerned with your client wanting to operate a nightclub in a residential area.
Well, there, I, you know, they're still gonna meet the minimum requirement for restaurant license in terms of food, which is why they're putting the kitchen. They frankly would not have put that investment in if they weren't intending to meet the requirement. It's a lot, it's a huge investment required putting in a grease trap because the premises did not have a grease trap before. And that was something that had to be worked out with the landlord, that had to work out with DPP.
I'm gonna stop you there, those are not our concern.
I understand that.
Our concern is that this licensee is under a restaurant general category one standard bar license.
Understand.
And they have continuously skirted the line of what that category of license is, um, is allowed to do. And I want to, I want to feel confident that we're not putting a dead actor into a residential neighborhood.
You're, you're not, I mean, one of the things that I would say is that, uh, when you would have the chance to comment on that, when the preliminary attorney comes up with the live entertainment and before we went that far, we looked at whether or not the walls would contain the sound of the walls would contain. So there are things that we look at, but as far as them writing as a nightclub, they fully intend to comply with the requirements of a restaurant license, which is why they put the money in to put the restaurant, put the kitchen. So they are serving a good amount of food, part of that food does involve the entertainment, but they will be complying with the rules.
When I go to this area, when I go to this location, am, am I gonna walk in and feel like I'm in a restaurant?
It is a restaurant, it is a restaurant that will have a DJ in, like many of the.
Well, hold on a second.
Yeah. But many.
I believe that has not been approved yet, correct?
No, that is correct, but, um, once, once the live entertainment is approved, that's what they're gonna do.
You are making a lot of assumptions, Mr. Keuchy.
I understand that, but if you're asking me what they're doing right now, you go in, they do not have a DJ because of what happened the last time.
Right, we had to rent them and then we had to bring them in here on a violation in order to get them to comply with their own class and category of license and that's not what we want to be doing.
I understand, but I repeat, they were found not guilty on one violation and on the same set of facts, two days later, they were found guilty.
And I will repeat that that was a very, very fine line they were.
I, and I understand, I understand what you're saying about the fine line. But the reason they're putting the kitchen in is they want to put food as more of a part of what they present.
Mr. Keuchy, I share the same concerns as vice chairman. Those long talks have to be longer, extensive. And it has to be very consistent with, um, what we consistently continue to say and the client has been lucky, um, the past times we've seen. Um, but I do share the same frustration, um, I hate to look at these type of cases, I hate to even, um, you know, even given, given what it is, I hate things coming in after the fact. Um, when we have a seasoned, a seasoned applicant or licensee that knows damn well what the rules are. So, given, given that frustration, I cannot, um, I cannot elaborate anymore than what vice chairman has said, and this is not within the applicant's best interest or our interest to be looking at this type of things. I want things cleaned, I want things remedied prior to getting here and not this is the situation. Longer talks, counseling, whatever it takes, it'll numb explaining to them how serious this is because even after the kitchen goes in, as it's been stated before, I hate for them to make an investment and something goes wrong and again comes back to us and you don't have a license at all.
I understand, I understand that.
Okay, a motion to convene into executive session, second.
Move in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Okay, um, we are, uh, back on the official record. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments or actions?
Uh, yes, Chair, uh, Mr. Keuchy, I wanna remind you that we take action on the request that is agenda before us, not on any future requests that may come before the commission.
Mr. Keuchy, thankfully, Jesus's birthday is gonna be arriving next weekend, by the grace of me and, and great hesitation, I am gonna make the motion, which is a motion to approve, request number one nine dash one five three seven six, second.
Move in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote, I agenda item number eighteen, request number one nine dash one five six eight four is approved. Mr. Keuchy, let me just remind you, you will be dealing with the three of us.
I, I, I understand, I, I understand that and toward, I have some serious issues. I will also assure you that there will be somebody in this seat the next time and there may be somebody in this seat by the time the adjudication on the same license is.
I'd like him to be here.
Oh, yeah, I, I would too, yeah.
We can continue with as well, Mr. Keuchy.
Twenty, twenty-two. If you take up twenty-two.
Good, Mr. High, cause it's, it's the Christmas season.
So that we can bring, uh, the other two.
Yes, thank you so much, let's call agenda item number, um.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, okay, we did, all right, okay, so this is, yes, thank you very much, um, request number, uh, agenda item number twenty-two, request number one nine dash one five seven one eight from FEC, I'm a key partners LLC.
Again, good afternoon, members of the commission, Chair Keith Keuchy for the licensee, this is to further extend the catering request, this is again on the ground of the.
Commissioners?
Motion to approve, request number one nine dash one five seven one eight, second.
Move in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote, I agenda item number twenty-two, request number one nine dash one five seven one eight is approved. Cookies are loaded, it's sugar.
You got a sugar box?
Jump along, please. Where are we going ladies?
Fifteen, sir.
Fifteen?
Yes, sir.
Well, bring him the box.
Uh, yeah.
Fifty-four. Forgot about that.
Keep your hands on the cookies.
Do you need all the cookies?
There's some cookies for the.
Aw, man.
Okay, um, okay, I like the sounds of that, okay, yeah, I got you. All right, calling agenda item number fifteen. Request number one nine dash one five five four zero from Mo and Jet Food and Spirits LLC.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Terry Lee for the applicant, to my right is Douglas Mo Morrison. Prior of the accident, thank you very much, commissioners?
How have things been going, Mr. Morrison?
Great.
This is on University Avenue, correct?
What's that?
University Avenue, College Bar?
Yeah, well, you know, we, we're trying to not be just a college bar, we're busy on Thursdays. But that's why we wanna get, we wanna get, have to be a local bar too, it's they're definitely gonna come on Thursday, which they have, we haven't had one incident in nine months. And, um, and, uh, but the other days, we go all over places and we wanna bring back local entertainment. And that's why we're, we got a hundred and ten, uh, signatures from local entertainers endorsing us. From, and they're not, we only have one DJ, so it's, it's not gonna be a big wild.
Maybe you could, um, consider, maybe you're gonna be wrestling.
We, we, that's why we're here.
Too far from the old Civic.
I'll go on a jump.
Yeah. Never know.
Never know.
Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Okay, motion to approve, request number one nine dash one five five four zero, second.
Move in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote, I agenda item number fifteen, request number one nine dash one five five four zero is approved. Good luck and keep up the good work, thank you, we appreciate that.
Cool, see ya.
Moving on to a, agenda item number sixteen, request number one nine dash one five five four six from DNS Enterprises LLC.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Keith Keuchy for the applicant, to my right is Chanel, S H A N E L E Salvatore. This is a request for approval, transfer membership interest. One member's going out, two new members are coming in, and to anticipate your next question, all records of the company will be given to the files.
Um, just one other question, are there any pending violations?
No, there are not.
There are not, okay.
A motion to approve, uh, Miss Salinas, request number one nine dash one five five four six, second.
Move in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote, I agenda item number sixteen, request number one nine dash one five five four six is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, we have handled the agenda number seventeen.
Yep.
Eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
Twenty-three.
So, um, Commissioner Meerschel remains out.
And we will go back to twenty-three.
Yes.
Okay, um, calling agenda item number twenty-three, request number one nine dash one five seven six four. And Keith Keuchy, LLC on behalf of Beer High Two LLC.
Good afternoon, again, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Keith Keuchy on behalf of the licensee both Beer High Two LLC and Tahiti Chef LLC. Uh, the commission has received several photographs, I think, showing what it is we're asking the commission to approve. I've also got. I've also got Cindy Goldstein, uh, who's present, she's. The head of the Hawaii Craft Brewers Guild, but before I bring her up, um, Mister Turner to have brought some samples. So this is a Maui brewing uh, tap handle, but if you look on this side, yeah, I know it's hard to see. But this is where the slot would go for what the name of the beer, that's kind of what the issue is. It's not so much whether or not you've named the beer, but it's the, you know, named the brewery itself for the beer. So this is a dish shoots handle and this is how they do it. With the, with the fresh haze inserted. This is another brewery that doesn't even have the name of the brewery, but has the name of the beer, like Dogfish Head, Dogfish Head.
And then this is a jelly pumpkin out of, so they have slots that you can put things into. And then you have very obnoxious ones as such. So what it is, is if anybody's ever been to brewed in Kamakiki. I don't, I, I have ten inches of space between where my tap panel would be able to go on. I can't fit a lot of these onto my, onto my taps. Because there's a box with all the beer lines on it. So, that was one of the issues, because when we first opened reel and brewed and pallets and now the new reel. My taps used to be on the bar itself. And if I had these big things here and I'm trying to serve you, I have to look through these to service you eye to eye. And it just wouldn't work out, so we, we went to the small, into s- small little black handles. And what we did is we numbered those and we had our boards directly behind the bar that we cranked down. And we have it above as a brew and we had it at the pallet. And I have television monitors that we have at the new reel space open in the building in Kamakiki in Kagaako. But the numbers on my draft correspond with my board, which correspond with my printed menu, which correspond with untapped. It's on our homepage of all of our bars. So if you go to the homepage, it has all the information, when it was updated, the brewery, the name of the beer, the IBUs, the ABVs. The pouring size and everything else, it just, it's a. I, I understand where the rule came from, it's just with everybody trying to do everything, there's a lot of people now that are going to just. Beautiful stainless steel knob or whatever it be. And I know that this is probably beyond what you guys as the commission can handle and it's something that we should probably take up with legislation. Try to see what can be done because, you know, not everything is otherwise or Heineken and everything anymore. So, the biggest problem is, is if the shoots makes a one-time beer or Maui makes a one-time beer. They have to make a handle that goes along with that beer per the law. And like Sobre Amano, you know, Island Cezanne is not gonna fit on the sides. And written from ten feet away.
And our, our argument is, is literally when we look at the, the statute, the statute said it's got to be plainly visible. In English on a platform and that's what we're arguing, that when you see the number plainly visible. It matches a number above there, it's also plainly visible, it complies with the statute. I understand, you know, the commission's gotta do what it's gotta do, but you know, I think. Um, and this is a statute that can't be waived, but I would argue, this is what I advise Mister Turner to. That it does comply with the little reading of the statute where you have to be plainly visible. You've got a number one and the number one corresponds with it. And let Cindy Goldstein, who's the head of the Hawaii Craft Brewers Guild, testify if that's okay, Mister Chair.
Yes, please do, and, and also can we be prepared to hear from licensing? Uh, enforcement also as to how this could possibly affect.
So very quickly.
Finally, we will hear from Mister Ryan, the uh, update commission on what is going to happen. At the legislature.
So, do you want me to run a timer on Miss Goldstein or just swear her in and let her?
So in all fairness, I think we should have a three-minute timer, right? In all fairness to the other people that are waiting to.
Do you swear that the testimony you give today's here will be the truth of the truth? Yes, I do, thank you. My name is Cindy Goldstein, C I N D Y G O L D S T E I N. I'm the executive director of the Hawaiian Craft Brewers Guild. Uh, I'd like to share our support and interest of the Hawaiian Craft Brewers Guild in this manner. Um, our members, we're a nonprofit organization representing our members, which are small craft breweries across the state of Hawaii. And we support the review and broader interpretation of this statute. Um, as mentioned, many small craft brewers and tap rooms are using digital displays and old technology. Blackboards to provide information about the beers that are being served. They provide a lot of additional information that helps customers make their decisions. And some of that information was um, previously spoken about. Um, oftentimes, our member breweries are making a seasonal brew that may be untapped for a limited amount of time. Or it may be a one-time specialty beer with special ingredients. It's very difficult to be able to have a tap handle for each beer when you have a number of years in rapid rotation. We know the larger national brands tend to have standard beer untapped that doesn't rotate very um, or change much over the years. Our industry, especially current trends, is to have beers that are uh, cycling more quickly and for shorter amounts of time. So we'd like to recommend the accommodation and use of video screens, blackboards, menus and other items. But especially understanding that those digital displays and blackboards are in close proximity to where the customer is. And able to identify the beer. Um, also on behalf of our members, just to comment for consideration or reconsideration of the enforcement and interpretation. Of this particular um, statute. So, uh, you know, we just want to convey that for our members. The, the design of the brewery, the style, having a cleaner look, uh, having clean tap handles. Is something that our members desire for design, but of course, we certainly want to uh, pay attention to compliance. And it's very important to our members to um, work well with the commission.
Commissioners, do you have any question? Can we hear, can we hear from, uh, thank you very much. Can we hear from licensing and enforcement as to what issues you potentially see?
Supervising Investigator Daniel Safel, licensing.
Acting Supervising Investigator Scott Perez, enforcement. So, issues that we've come across in the past or as we said, we've noticed that a lot of these establishments have. The taps with no markings on it at all, or they have a board and they just tell the customers. Oh, those are the tops and those are the beers that we have on those tops. So, clearly marking, clearly marking the tops is want to show the customers exactly what's meaning for. Um, I do understand that a lot of these tops are largely has been displayed. Um, but they don't necessarily have to be that way, they just need to be marked, how, whatever part is coming out. So as long as my investigators are able to determine that the beer that's coming out of that top is labeled as such.
With respect from my side, it, it'll be kind of difficult to uh, determine. What the law actually means, you know, first reading or checking with T P B because. There may be federal statutes that apply also. And it, it doesn't mention or make mention of any digital boards or what have you, um. That's unlikely common at this time.
Yes, please, so. In the last five years since we've opened real and everything, the beer, beer community's changed a lot. So there are new uh, there are new apps out there, untapped being one of them, break beer being another one. Um, Tap Hunter is another one. So we actually are signed up with untapped, which is the number one beer app across the country. People can share what they know about beer, but also they can look up establishments. So, on my board, the way it works is in the middle of the night, if I run out of a draft line. I can change that draft line instantly on the app, which will change it on the thing. And then we can cross off on the board above us what we're going to, where the other thing would be. You, I wouldn't have that opportunity, you know, if keg dies that night, you pretty much are stuck at that point. And you, you're stuck with just one less top line. But it is updated and you can say, okay, hey, this is it, and if you go to any of my websites, right on the homepage, it has it. When it was updated, what the time is and what, all of the information. And if it's changed, you can set it up to go to anybody's social media and say, okay, we grabbed up just tapped such and such. On this top line. Because the only other thing is, is a lot of these companies look at these stickers. So I'm gonna use this as examples, Lagunitas IPA. Biggest problem is the backside says Little Something. So, if I'm pouring a little Lagunitas IPA, you're gonna see this and I'm gonna see Little Something.
Why?
Because I either have to get with the rest and give us stickers for every one of them and make sure. Or they have to give me one handle for every single beer. So what they do is they'll usually just slap a sticker on a generic, because like I said, the same thing is with the shoots. You have empty spaces, but they give you something that says IPA or Indian Pale Ale. But you can't really get this piece out.
Yeah, but, uh, let me ask a question, do you have to use those or can you just, are they allowed to just use? You know, uniform pulls as long as it has the name of the beer that's being pulled from that cap on it, do we have to use those or not?
So long they identify it.
Right, so that's the issue, we're not taking issue with what the company send you or whatever.
No, no, no.
We're taking issue with is that there is not anything to identify what beer is being pulled out of the cap, you guys can make your own holes, you can. You know, whatever, put a masking tape on there.
Well, but, but that's, but that's why they've gone to the numbering system, because in this day and age of beer, so this is. Like Lagunitas, Little Something, Indian Pale Ale, which is a mouthful and trying to get that on a cap handle is challenging. So, the, the statute says it's gotta be clearly marked, how, it's almost impossible to clearly mark. A beer with a name that long, because that's the full name of the beer, it's Lagunitas, Little Something.
Okay, hold on one second, are they allowed to use abbreviations?
I, I, I know based on the labels, they, they have to identify clearly what, what it is that they're being served.
So no, so no abbreviations at all.
And that, that's from, according to the statute. And that's why we thought to the numbering system, but it's gotta be accompanied with the menu book, the board on the top. Which fully identifies the full name of the beer.
Okay, my next question is, so I, I hear what you said about the technology where you can, uh, I guess electronically change out the cap lines. Is that how, so is you guys, that's how it's changed now, is that you change the cap electronically? And then you also electronically change the board?
Every day, so what I do is every day I have my beverage manager comes in and if we do run out of a tap. We, most, most of the time we might let it rest until the next day. We change the keg, we change the app, we change reprint the menus and we, we're inserting new menu drafts every day. And they're, they're dated on our, in, in our menus, so it's on a daily basis. The thing is, I just don't want to be in violation because it is something that I have to many, and I want to work with you guys to try to make this good.
And, and, and this was a long conversation we had because frankly, I can very well argue that the numbering system worked. I can see somebody arguing on the other side that this got to be the full name. So that's why we brought is a declaratory ruling and I told Troy, it might be something that is quote unquote above our pay grade. But nevertheless, wanted to bring it to the commission's attention because he doesn't want to be in a situation where he gets a violation. Because he's using the numbering system, which I think gives more information than the tap handles actually would.
How easy is it to make a mistake and misnumber something and miscategorize it on the, on the electronic board?
You, you put your tap number to it, it has a space where the, you type in the name of the beer, it pops up all the informations in database.
No, no, no.
What, what tap number it's on, you just put what it, what it is on.
About human error, if you're tired, long day, whatever, and you're changing it out, is there a possibility for you to put the wrong beer in the right, in the, in the?
No.
Number.
No, because you're actually changing the keg on the line that's empty. You may make a mistake and put the wrong number in that space, but on the board where you've taken out your thing. Mine is permanently written on there, so if I erase number ten, ten still stays and I just write in the name of the new beer.
But it is possible to put the wrong number on the cap, is that what you're saying?
No, in the app, in the app, when you're putting a new beer on, in the app. If I say number ten, Lagunitas IPA, we're out. I can change tap ten, I can just change the name of the beer to the new beer, but it'll stay number ten. Or if I want to move it to another line, I could say, okay, now it's gonna be on number twenty four.
So the only human error would be if you ran out of a beer, you had to erase it on the board and somebody wrote it wrong.
I actually have a comment on this, uh, numeric system as well. Um, there is some consistency, you know, the way I see in the pictures as well, it's uh. You have some numerics from twenty one to twenty six and the rest is written out and up and down, so in essence that doesn't match. So you go the name thirteen, right, and then you have the number one three on the handle, so, I mean, that can be argued back and forth.
Right.
I see the reason why you're coming into that, that's, and that's not my interpretation of the statute.
So your point is that the number should be on the tap and the number should be on the board.
Couldn't.
Yeah, and, and, no, that's, and that actually is well taken, because I knew it should, the, the numbers were written up to.
Right. I mean, that's just a comment.
Yeah, I understand.
You know, because these rules are, were created to prevent fraud and to protect the consumer. So, you know, say you, and, and beers are priced differently, you know. So it's to prevent, you know, I'm ordering a very expensive beer and you pulling me a much cheaper beer. Does that make sense? So, how are you folks gonna prevent that type of thing from happening?
Well, the thing is, is any bar you walk into, if it says, if it says Heineken on the handle. You have to, you're, you're going to dice, it's Heineken hooked up in the keg room. You know, there is a lot that says you have to pour a drink in front of the guest, but you have Dave and Buster's and different hotels that have service kitchen, service bars in their kitchen. You can't tell me, if you said, oh, I wanna, I want a great goose and soda, you don't know if you're getting a great goose, it's the same thing. You know, we, we tried to bring in high-end beers and we tried to teach people about high-end beers. And we're not trying to run a nightclub, we're just trying to run a really cool gastropub beer bar. So, you know, it's my reputation and my, my, my workers' reputation if we're trying to pull a snag on somebody else. I'm not gonna say I have a three hundred dollar keg and I'm serving you Old Milwaukee in a keg. That's, that's not the intention. I think the only place you can actually see all the kegs is if you're gonna like Yard House.
My question is, this may be a little bit out of the scope of the commission's responsibility. Why can't you bracelet each spout as you have numbered? Tag it with what is coming out of that spout?
You can, but you're gonna end up pouring beer on the other ones that are hanging.
No, I, no, I'm just talking about, I'm just talking about. Yeah, like, we could hang.
You know, just a dog tag?
Would that, okay, so if, if I were to get like a dog tag.
I'm looking, excuse me, I'm, I'm looking at your, I'm looking at your. Correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so why can't you just tag this number one with the full name of what's coming out of that spout? Would that not satisfy the statute? Maybe we could have, uh, are we getting too far out of our scope? No, I, the only problem with that, I mean, and actually that's a good point, except it's a readable ten feet away, is the problem, so. I mean, that's, and you know, one of the reasons we rate, I mean, this may not be, when you said.
What you say, Mister Kiuchi?
So, I, I mean, this may not be something the commission would, you know, you might be right, it may not be within commission's purview because it's a statute. But there are two reasons for bringing it, one is to raise the awareness because it might be some changes in legislation, it might be. It may be possible to adjust the rules, but also frankly, my client doesn't want to be in a position where he gets cited because he's trying to comply with the rules. So that's kind of what we brought as a pro act. So that's kind of what we brought as a proactive manner as much as anything else. If the answer is we can't go beyond there because it's a statute and, yeah, I mean, we could label it, but you know, honestly, that'd be a red tent to win. And I understand that. I mean, this is probably a healthy discussion that needs to be had, but um, you know, we thought we.
Yeah, that, let me, um, let me, um, Mister Y, um, comment on what she knows, uh, moving forward.
Yeah, um, I can try. So certainly, um, uh, the legislative solution would be a, a good one. Um, uh, the the session is right around the the corner and I know the uh, brewery, the brewers are are interested in pursuing legislative solutions for other things, and so certainly this could be included. We're also in the midst of rulemaking right now, um, and, uh, we could, uh, provide some interpretive guidance in the rules. I will say that, uh, it's unlikely that we're gonna be able to complete that process before, uh, close of FY nineteen based upon our current schedule. I will also comment, there are no rules currently interpreting, uh, that statutory requirement because up until very recently, um, there has, to my knowledge, not been violation activity surrounding that requirement. That may be because the, uh, brew pub paradigm has changed rather dramatically rapidly. Now these violations are being issued for the first time and we don't have rules, so we we can address it that way. I also would like to comment that, um, you know, I've been here at the commission since, uh, two thousand.
Thank you for your service.
You're welcome.
We can't do it without you, Em.
Um, if one of the purposes of this statutory requirement was to, uh, prevent, uh, consumer fraud, I cannot recall a time when we have received a complaint specifically saying, I ordered such and such beer at a location and I'm pretty sure I didn't get what I ordered. I I cannot recall one in the time I've been here. Now, maybe that, that that might happen in the future, but, um, I can't. And the final comment I will, uh, make, and this is where I I myself am stepping a little footfield in terms of TTB requirements. They may not provide as much guidance as you think on this matter because the TTB cola certificate of label approval would be specific to the keg, not individual serving. So whatever you pour from that, the keg is, cause we see those colas, they send them to us, we say, fine, you're not using permissible language. Um, and you're, you're good to go without further documentation. Um, the TTB labeling requirement would not extend to, for example, growlers that are filled from that tap because, and it's kinda odd, but this is something that was discussed at a legal symposium. Cause TTB considers that growler to be a serving, an individual serving. And that labeling requirement does not append to the glass of wine or the stein of beer or the growler that is taken from the properly labeled, um, keg. They probably leave that to the states to enforce consumer fraud or trickery or what have you, so.
As to growlers, all the locals do have, uh, ring collars that they put onto the necks of the growlers when you buy them. It states what you purchased.
Which might be an alternative, except you can't see it.
Yeah, well, it's the thing, on the on the kegs, the ringers come as well.
Yeah.
Good for us, would you like to? Within the past year or so, enforcement has issued citations to two licensees for this violation in which they pretty much advertised or, um, had their display submitted to that of what they're asking for. So, the way that it reads it, the taps need to be labeled for what's coming out of the, coming out of the tap.
Yes, Mister Nakadog, please join the conversations.
Sorry for my tired.
God, you look.
You're not a god, you can rest cater to the commission. I I think what we have here is kind of the tail wagging the dog situation where, um, the brew pubs, this industry has grown so much and we recognize the technology that's coming along with it. However, we didn't, there's no, there was no productivity to try and change the statute to make these things fit. So they're placing things in place that may or may not be in contrary to statute, right, at this point. And, you know, we we respect the, uh, technologies coming up. Uh, we get it. However, again, it may not fit within our statutory requirements for two and one, so. Uh, like I said, I think it's a tail wagging the dog issue where they're putting things in place without it being clearly, uh, legal at this point. That's.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Kelly?
Um, just so that works here, um, you folks are asserting to this commission that the numbering, which corresponds with the clearly visible and readable menu boards, are, uh, uh, they they comply with the statute because the numbers then indicate what is being poured. Is that what you are asserting to the commission? That that is your interpretation?
Yes, it's clearly visible from ten.
And if I could just interject, so whether a commission action on this matter is, would not be considered precedent for other brew pubs or oncoming consumption, is specific to this request or and only the facts that are stated in the request for a declaratory ruling has changed one iota and basically it changes the ruling.
Right.
Results, just saying.
That is what it features.
Motion to convenance, executive session, second.
Move in second, all votes in favor.
Aye.
I vote, I, you know, in favor of the session. Okay, um, thank you. Uh, we are now, um, back on the official, uh, record. Um, commissioners, do you have a type of action?
Um, uh, before.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
We appreciate you folks coming in and being so active about this matter. Uh, however, um, because this is a statute, we are not the legislature. We don't feel comfortable making a declaratory ruling on this matter and we encourage you to go to the legislature to get this statute amended so that it can align with our modern, our modern day brew pubs. That being said, um, we're gonna take this matter under advisement.
Thank you.
And no action will be taken.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so now let's move into agenda item number twenty-four. Oh, I'm sorry. Um, yeah.
Yeah.
Can I have a, uh, no, can I have a motion on, um, agenda items number twenty-eight?
Oh, we're on twenty-four.
We're bringing back Commissioner Misha.
I wish, I wish we were on twenty-eight.
Thank you, Mr. Kim. I was right, I was right the first time.
Yes, yes, sir.
Uh, call you agenda item number twenty-four, request number one nine dash one five seven four six for Mister Joseph Kim, President AA Mark LLC, or video show. Is that Mister Kim and Mister Kim?
Mister Chairman, Commissioners, Thomas Kim, last name K I M, authorized representative. Here today is Mister Joseph Kim, K I M, president and the owner of the, like, yeah.
And for the record, there is no relationship, correct? Commissioners?
Uh, so this is a request to use existing documents on trial, correct?
Yes, we're, we're, we'd like to change from retail general to.
No, 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 no. This request is for to use the document you have.
Existing documents, yes.
And, um, the existing documents we have, um, when, when, how long ago were they submitted?
That was, uh, when they first got the license, uh, the volume.
Is it more, more than two years?
Two years ago.
And has there been any issues? Have, have there been any changes?
No changes, same owner issue, no changes.
Have there been any issues with, uh, have the the members or the owners had any felony convictions?
No felony convictions.
But you have had violation.
Oh, if I could help out here, the reason why, uh, normally if there was, if the documents were two years current, we could, uh, take, uh, action on this administratively. This particular license transfer was effective February tenth of twenty sixteen. Therefore, the documents are older than two years, just slightly older than two years, which is why this request has to go before the commission. We don't have authority to take action on documents that are older than two years.
Thank you, Mister Mark. All right, so, um, given that you testified that there's no, you guys haven't had any felony convictions since, since the issuance of that. Um, motion to approve, request number one nine dash one five seven four six, second.
Move in second, all votes in favor.
Aye.
I vote, I, agenda item number twenty-four, request number one nine dash one five seven four six is approved.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
On agenda item number twenty-five, request number one nine dash one five seven four six from Christine Metag, Beagala, Beagala? Thank you.
May I sit on this side?
Yes, ma'am, please.
My name is Kirsty Metag Beagala, M I T T A G hyphen D E G A L H.
It's a request for cancellation of the restaurant general license.
Mister Beagala, where's, um, Ms. Ho?
I don't know where she is.
You understand that Ms. Ho is the holder of the license.
Uh, I understand that she did not transfer to us, yes. She did, uh, sell us U B L L C, um, which is the business that we purchased, but she refused to transfer the license, um, into our name.
According to our record, she stole the licensee.
Okay, um, I just, we closed our business and I returned the license to you, which, um, I understand should be the right thing to do.
Has there been, have you made any effort to locate Ms. Ho?
Oh, she is the landlord, the seller and landlord of the business that we purchased.
Okay, so, but you, so when asked, you don't know where she is, but so have you been in conversations with her? Are you communicating with her?
No, we are not because she has been trying to get us out of this restaurant since we, um, purchased the restaurant. It was her intention always to take it back after we fixed it up and, um, that she would, um, uh, basically she has done that. We are now, we are no longer in that restaurant.
If I could, uh, um, Mister Chair and Commissioners, so the request or has, uh, submitted, uh, the has submitted to us the, the valid issued license for this premises. Um, however, Ms. Metag Beagala is not, uh, an authorized representative of the licensee, Ms. Ho. Uh, administration does not have, uh, authority to take action with respect to the license, although the commission does have that authority. Our recommendation beca- uh, while we sort this matter is out, is that you authorize the placement of license, of the license in safekeeping, uh, which will not cancel the license, but will hold it, uh, take it out of circulation in safekeeping while we, uh, sort of try to straighten matters out with the licensee in terms of the status of the license.
So that we have the power to do it.
Yes, all right, so.
I have one question, um, it looks like the purchase agreement that was submitted to the commission both parties were represented by counsel. Any transaction?
Yeah, the contract was, um, I had a lawyer, was it drawing up of the contract? Is that what you mean?
Yes, and have you tried to resolve it to the lawyer?
Oh, she's no longer involved. Her only, um, her only thing she did for us was actually put the, uh, contract together.
We can, we can allow the safety.
But not approved.
No, no, we can, we can not approve. So.
So, just move to, um, place, uh, rest of restaurant general license number R one three one one.
Yeah, motion.
Into safekeeping.
Motion regarding, um, license number R one three one one to place license into safekeeping, second.
Then move them second, all votes in favor.
Aye.
I vote, aye. So, agenda item number twenty-five, request number one nine dash one five seven four six. The order, the commission orders the general license number R one three one one into safekeeping.
And now please work with the administration to settle this matter.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
On agenda item number twenty-six, request number one nine dash one five seven six seven, present the document, approve.
Yes, Jay, to a possible conflict. I'm gonna have to review myself in this agenda item. Thank you, Commissioner.
Good evening, Mister Chairman. Good evening, General Commissioners. I thought I'd have to say good evening, but it's wrong. Uh, Devin DeCobbe, representing, uh, General Korean College. Um, we're asking for the waiver because at this time during the holidays, um, these three members who actually have no day-to-day operation with this, they actually have nothing to say with the company. Um, they own twenty percent, nine point nine percent, and nine per, nine point nine percent respectively. Um, so they, yeah, they, they have nothing to do with day-to-day operations for the company. Uh, they were, they were put on their name, um, I spoke to the company representatives and they assured me that, um, none of these members, uh, have been, um, have been, I'm sorry, I'm trying to remember the word.
Convicted.
Yeah, I have not been convicted of a felony, so I don't like saying that word, convicted of a felony, so it's hard to remember.
Mister Nakadog, did you?
A word that sticks with you for your entire life.
Where, um, where are the clients located? Are they?
They're all on the mainland, but they're all traveling because it's the holidays. We'd be trying to track them down, but it's difficult. And we could get a notary to them and it became unwieldy and because we were trying to get the special license, uh, we're trying to also apply not only for the, of regular license, but also the special license, uh, to cover the timeframe. Um, because the construction got, uh, a little bit strange and then all of a sudden it happened and they're saying, okay, we need a license now. And I'm telling them, okay, well, we need to do it in the correct, uh, the correct process, so.
So the main, how much members total?
Uh, four.
The main member has, how much is the person?
Is sixty percent.
And he has already his people working there?
Yes, I have the people working there.
Let me ask this question. Are you, is she open?
So, oh, no, she's not.
She is not open.
No, the build, uh, they're, they're still.
Still under construction.
It's actually a General Korean that's gonna be going.
And you're asserting to the commission that, you know, convictions?
Yes, no.
Your, your representation is you're speaking to an agent and not them specifically?
No, I have not spoken to them, but I've spoken to someone from the company.
And they're attesting that these three members did not get them?
They've, they've said that they can try to, uh, they can try to get letters from the, uh, the members themselves. Uh, but again, it's a matter of trying to track them down and get the information. That, that's been the, the major stumbling block they run into and it's, it slowed everything down for a call. And I have everything else and I'm ready to. And I have everything else and I'm ready to go, and so when this came up, it was like, oh, okay.
Were they not aware that this was coming up, like, you know, like, I don't think there's a deadline to submit this, we could have got this earlier as well, right?
I understand, um some of it was trying to track them down, some of it was also, and I'll I'll be straight up honest, some of it was because they were nine point nine percent. It's my fault, I went, I think we're okay, so that's that's intent.
Oh, the thing about it, yeah, Mister Nekoba, is you got people from consolidated theaters, you got California vacation, which you know. That they're all over the world, we got people in Japan, all kinds of stuff happening and they comply with the rules. So um blatantly, you know, like with you saying that if you're taking responsibility for it and you're saying that this is a. A mishap on your end and you drop the ball, and basically, you know what I mean, it's now it's time to run around and get this stuff done.
No, I mean, I've.
And and the 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 only reason why I'm saying this is the the rules are set per specific.
I understand.
For us to not have any information at all on a John Doe and just assume they're not a criminal, not assume anything from them. And have no declaration, nothing from them is another situation.
If I can get something from them that will, that's a statement that is. Uh I guess a legal paper, will that satisfy?
Seen them, I haven't seen them to date, I've seen everybody else come forward. I've seen pictures of them, I've seen their biography, I've seen everything basically about them that allows us to grant a license. In this situation, you're asking us to, you're gonna give us three names. And you're gonna express what the share level is, and you're not gonna even like give us a personal biography about them. So I have no idea how long they've had the holdings of the company, if they started yesterday. I mean, I think that's kind of unfair for us with nothing before to make the decision as well to grant a license as well too, right? I mean, do you understand like our perspective? I mean, like, you know what I'm saying, we're getting three names. You're gonna provide us, you're basically just gonna provide us names. And that's it. What are you providing to us? Or what can you provide if you're we're waiting or you're asking for? No personal affidavit, no criminal check or anything, so what are you?
I'm, my understanding is they're in the process of getting a letter that can, I guess, they're gonna figure out a way to get it notarized. That says that none of them have any criminal record at all.
And does it cover their past work history, their experience, all the, all of that is listed as well in a normal application that we would receive?
I, yeah, I would have to check, I don't wanna lie to you, it's to this, it must be serious, so.
Okay, Mister Nekoba, um I'm gonna, I'm gonna make my motion, um. But I will express this is that, you know what needs to be done. We're not two weeks away, we're not one week away. Your future clients you represent, anybody you represent, need to be on top of the ball. This isn't the first time I've seen stuff like this come out of Mister Nekoba, okay? So I don't wanna be dealt with a John Doe, Mrs. Doe or anything, three names and let's just figure it out and just grant it. I want them to go through everything like everybody else, any licensee that crosses here.
Thank you, Grandma.
Okay, motion to approve request number one nine dash one five seven six seven, second.
Move to second, all in favor.
Aye.
I vote I, agenda item number twenty six, request number one nine dash one five seven six seven is approved. On agenda item number twenty seven, this is um Arts Culture Merchants. Post event report, I do not see any representation.
Yes, I I apologize, Mister Chair and Commissioners, I actually had a conversation with Nicole Reed about this matter. So I am, I do not know why she is, she or a representative are not present. I can only say we'll we'll reschedule.
Okay, fine.
Do you need a motion?
Uh if you just direct me to reschedule to the next available date.
Motion to continue, agenda item twenty seven to the next available date, second.
Move to second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I vote I, agenda item number twenty seven, excuse me, is uh continued to the next available date.
Chair motion for the adoption of decision in order for agenda items twenty eight through. Forty inclusive, second.
Move to second, all in favor.
Aye.
I vote I, the adoption of decision in order, agenda items number twenty eight through forty inclusive are approved. Good afternoon. Moving into adjudications, calling.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the commission, Deputy Corporation Counsel Pedro Gata, and along with me is Oquico Reyes. Uh who's gonna be witness, but before we begin the adjudications, can I demand, please have permission to address the gallery.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So ladies and gentlemen, uh my name is Pedro Gata, I'm the Deputy Corporation Counsel who is going to meet um discussing the following matters. The most of you who are here are here because of your charge of failure to file timely gross liquor sale. So I'm gonna read to you the card right now, so that I don't have to repeat for everyone, okay? So the charge against everyone who is here who has been charged with liquor sale violation is as follows. Licensee failed to file with the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu on a report July thirty first two thousand eighteen. A report as directed by the commission showing the gross amount of liquor sold by the licensee during the twelve months. Beginning July first two thousand seventeen and ending June thirty two thousand eighteen, violation number three dash eighty one dash seventeen point five four. Subsection C of the laws and regulations of the city and county of Honolulu. So after, when you come up here, you're gonna be asked to introduce yourself, you may admit, plead no contest, or plead not guilty and contest the charge. If you choose to admit or plead no contest, I will recommend a fine based on how late the filing was and whether there were previous violations of the same section. If you would like to plead not guilty or contest the charge, your matter will be um just what we put to the end of the calendar. No matter what we call that, and if Oquico Reyes would plead next to me, will be here to testify every day. Um if anyone you know now that you intend to contest your violation. Now please, um, thank you very much.
Okay, so let's move on and all uh agenda item number forty one. Amnesia, uh amnesia.
Amnesia.
One more time.
Amnesia.
Amnesia.
Like you pu- you get amnesia for a hobby?
I do, I do, every day about this time.
Meli Maxwell, K A M E L E M A X T, so I'm also for forty three.
Okay, let's move on to one of this. Bless you, bless you.
Oh my god. Bye.
Yeah, okay. Why shouldn't it?
Ah, I'm sorry, so you hope you read the charge.
We read the charge.
How would you like to plead, sir? Motion to accept a guilty plea, second.
Move to second, all in favor.
Aye.
I vote I, agenda item number forty one, the guilty plea is accepted.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
What if I'm no longer an officer whatsoever or in relation to these companies?
Uh we should take that up after your plea, so you are admitting to the violation then, correct?
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Obaka, this uh matter, this is a second time violation on the, to my knowledge, at as of. Yesterday, GLS was not filed, recommended fine is one thousand two hundred fifty dollars plus the filing of the GLS and whatever um fines are associated with that. Sir, okay, what is your comment?
I am no longer affiliated with this company since two thousand fifteen.
So why are you appearing on their behalf?
I got summoned here.
According to our LCIS um report and printout, this was Mister Maxwell is the last known. Representative of this company.
Is this um business still in operation?
No, it was dissolved and closed down in January, the entire block of two thousand seventeen.
Okay, and was the license ever put into safekeeping or canceled?
Not for my honor.
And?
Not for my.
No gross liquor sales reports have been?
Not for this year.
Have been received?
Nothing.
And what about for the previous year? So if they were closed in January two thousand seventeen, wouldn't there have been another one from the previous year? This is for two thousand eighteen.
We have not, so it appears that uh two thousand seventeen was how the the previous violation was for fiscal year two thousand sixteen.
Okay.
I, my question is, I mean, if he's not an authorized representative like he claims.
Right, are we able to issue a violation if somebody is not an authorized representative?
I don't think so, um and I certainly so, surveying all the.
If 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 Ms. Reyes has information, I'm gonna go ahead and swear it, swear for it in, because actually we have, this is part of the research we would conduct, so. Here, I'm gonna, do you swear that the testimony given today, you have to believe the truth, hold truth, and nothing but the truth?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mister, what information can you give us about this licensee?
According to the information we have in our system, um as of end of uh fiscal year eighteen. Um the license was not renewed, but the officer was under Carmella C. Maxwell. And in the comment section, it states that Dimitris Smith is not an approval officer. For our agency, as per the then history or background history lies, I do not know because that's not my section. However, it appears that he was an officer.
Has the license been changed?
Yeah, no, it was not renewed.
It was not renewed.
But the final report was not filed.
So it clearly shows that he is a responsible agent, according to our records, because you can't furnish anything else saying that you're not. Do you have anything that says you sold it?
I did not, but.
Did you update us of that sale?
I believe so, I talked to. I didn't know he he was not, I didn't know he was denied. He told me he was approved.
Can we hear from our licensing supervisor, please?
I swear you, do you swear that the testimony given today, you have to believe the truth, hold truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes. I believe, I believe for the, there there was a stock transfer that involved Mister Carmelli and Mister Smith. And I do believe to the best of my recollection, it was denied by the commission.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh motion to convene for executive exception, second.
Move to second, all in favor.
Aye.
I vote I, we are now in executive. Okay, we are now, excuse me, we are now back on the record, thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have any uh questions for uh?
Yes.
Gentlemen.
Mister Maxwell.
Mister Maxwell.
Um question, so it was, it's under, your understanding that this business got transferred or it was given over to another partner? During that transaction, you executed, I'm assuming executed some type of paperwork. Was there any monetary exchange of funds to to the next owner or the? Were you paid any funds?
I was actually given a promissory note, which he debunked, which is also on file in my banknotes. They went to cry and tried to get the money, but then he did nothing.
Did, so you didn't, for the record, did you receive any? Did you receive any monetary funds from the dissolving of this business?
Yes.
You did.
No, well, actually, the other partner did, yes. The group of us did, but my portion was the promise.
Okay, so you said there's a group of you, right? Right now?
Because according to, at the time, there was two of us. Um myself and another person recognized as an officer of the corporation.
So would be you and another person who makes this corporation, okay?
Who was the other person?
Uh Elaine Ju.
You said someone got compensation for the transaction?
Actually, I worked for that.
Who who got the compensation?
Elaine.
Did you personally receive, hold on, did you personally receive any compensation from the transaction?
Promissory note.
No con- no compensation?
Us, yes, I did.
Just the note?
No, I did.
What did you get?
Sixty thousand.
What is the amount of the note?
Eighty thousand.
Here that. One more question, sorry, one more question. Mister uh Maxwell, are you a um? Are you a licensee for any other restaurant or bar? Do you have a license for any of them?
No, no, well.
There, let me try.
Twenty-three.
Do you have any interest in any business that serves or sells alcohol?
Currently, no.
When was the last time you held an interest in such things?
That's the one that's coming up in twenty-three. Thank you.
I'm gonna, my motion is to approve the one thousand dollar fine, second.
Move to second, all in favor.
Aye.
I vote I, um agenda item number forty one, the recommended fine of one thousand?
No, I reduced it to one thousand.
One thousand dollars is approved.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Was this the copy three out of order?
Yes.
Your copy three.
Thank you. On agenda item number forty-three, Fusion Y K P.
Go ahead, sir, can please introduce yourself.
Meli Maxwell, K A M E L E M A X W E R L.
And how would you like to plead, admit, deny, or plead no contest?
Admit.
Motion to accept uh the admitted plea, uh second.
Move to second, all in favor.
Aye.
I vote I, agenda item number forty-three, the admitted violation accepted.
Ms. Obaka, your recommendation.
This is a first time violation, the GLS has not been filed to date and the license is not renewed, reckon- renewed, excuse me, recommended fine is one thousand dollars plus filing of the GLS.
Mister Maxwell, um the, are you able to file your gross liquor sales report?
No, because I was gonna close it down and I saw the same person, Dimitrios Smith, for a hundred dollars.
But that doesn't prevent you from filing a report based on.
I was out of.
Record of sales you have.
I was out of the corporation name of two thousand seventeen.
You don't have access to those documents?
Not at all.
Who does have access to those documents?
And this location is actually located right next door to forty-one, same block that's closed down. So it closed off exactly January twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen.
Any questions, Commissioner?
And for the record, your your defense on this is, you're saying that you were not a partner in that deal, the same.
I haven't been, I haven't been accessed or had any running of either business from two thousand fifteen for the first one to two thousand, yeah, two thousand seventeen for the second one. I just never, I took his word that it got transferred.
Um motion to accept the recommended fine of one thousand dollar, second.
Move to second, all in favor.
Aye.
I vote I, agenda item number forty-three, recommended fine of one thousand dollars is approved.
Thank you for coming, sir.
Moving back to agenda item forty-two, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Paul Hanna Lounge.
Aloha, my name is Kalini Telekai, K A Okina I M I, P E L E K I. I'm president of J M S K Kapala Inc.
Nice to see you, Mister Telekai.
Nice to see you too.
Wow, a long time.
It's been a while. I understand the charges and I plead no contest.
Thank you. A motion to accept the no contest, please, second.
Move to second, all in favor.
Aye.
I vote I, agenda item number forty-two, the no contest plea is accepted.
Mr. Fatah, your recommendation, recommendation is a one thousand dollar fine, the GLS was filed on November nineteenth, two thousand eighteen.
Is this a first time violation?
Yes.
Mister Telekai, any comments?
Yes, so our uh, we renewed our license in two thousand and seventeen, and then in August, beginning of September, our landlord changed. And uh we couldn't negotiate a new lease, so we closed, so we were out of business from August of two thousand seventeen. Trying to negotiate a new lease with our landlord. Um we weren't able to do that, but because the landlord is my alma mater from M M schools. I decided to try and work with the new landlord and find somebody who might wanna buy the business. And entice them to take over the lease and lease out the the space. Uh so we did that for six months or so, but we couldn't find anybody. So what happened, um again, the business was closed, I let all our employees go, I had no accountant. Was doing all the filing, Mr. Yamaguchi was my accountant, and everything was filed on time, but we were doing no business in all of two thousand and seventeen, so. He was gone, I wasn't paying him anymore, I have a full-time job, uh and it just was a clerical oversight. That uh at the end of this filing year, we didn't renew the license, because again, the business is closed and we just didn't. We missed the filing of the gross liquor sales. So Mister Conti, uh I think the investigator contacted me on, he left a voicemail on November fifteenth. I replied to him that day, but I couldn't come down because it was too late, the next day I worked. So the only next time I could come was November nineteenth. So I came on the nineteenth, I signed the summons, and I filed the liquor sales. So I think uh we have a good reputation with the commission, I've been before the commission for a number of different reasons. Um and like she stated, I don't, we didn't have any violations of them to this point, so. I throw myself at the mercy of the commission, because it's Christmas. Thousand dollars is a lot of money, and it was never my intent to fraud or to uh you know. Uh get around the rules, again, we weren't in operations, and uh we didn't renew the license, thank you.
And are you, do you have any interest in any current um bars or restaurants that are?
No.
No interest at all?
Yes, no.
So you don't have another bar that's operating currently?
No.
Um hearing that, my motion is to issue a letter of recommendation, second.
Move to second, all votes in favor.
I.
I vote I, agenda item number forty two, a letter of recommend will be issued.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Calling agenda item number forty four.
Yes, sir.
Ryan's Grill at Gordon Center.
Members of the commission, I spoke in with a woman named Monique Quintines, who I believe was one of the. Uh managers at Ryan's Grill, Ryan's has shut down, my understanding is that the business is, has also since shut down. They were going to attempt to file their gross liquor sales report, I don't believe that it has been received by the commission. This woman that I spoke to was on the mainland, and I believe that most of the other members of of the licensee. Are either on the mainland or off island. At any rate, she does under, she was aware of today's hearing, and I informed her that I would probably, that I would be moving for default. That my recommended fine would be one thousand two hundred fifty dollars, and she understood, as such, I'm gonna move for default.
Uh motion to approve a default judgment of one thousand two hundred fifty dollars, second.
They moved in second, all votes in favor.
I.
I vote I, agenda item number forty four, a default judgment in the amount of one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars will be issued. Calling agenda item number forty five, Bella Bistro. A response, for the record. Proper service made.
Proper service was made in person on November sixteen, two thousand eighteen, as such, I'm gonna move for default.
Thank you.
What's your recommendation?
One thousand dollars, if the um the GLS was filed on November twenty third, two thousand eighteen.
It what amount?
One thousand doll, I'm sorry, what amount, I'm sorry? Uh the fine?
Yeah.
One thousand.
Uh motion to issue a default judgment of one thousand dollars, second.
Move to second, all votes in favor.
I.
I vote I, agenda item number forty five, a de- excuse me, a default judgment in the amount of one thousand dollars will be issued. Coming agenda item number forty six, Jerry's Grill.
Members of the commission, I spoke with this licensee uh who informed me that he was unable to make today's hearing. Um as such, I'm gonna move to continue this matter to the next available date, no objections.
Motion to continue, agenda item forty six, Jerry's Grill, to the next available date, second.
Move to second, all votes in favor.
I.
I vote I, agenda item number forty six is continued to the next available date. Calling agenda item number forty seven, The Shack, Awai Kai LLC.
Um the. A member manager was served on November twenty seventh, two thousand eighteen. Um as such, I'm gonna move for default in the amount of one thousand two hundred fifty dollars plus payment of the licensing fee. Payment of the lic- the licensing fee is two thousand seven hundred seventy one dollars and sixty four cents.
Um uh motion to enter default judgment in the amount of one thousand two hundred fifty dollars. Plus the payment of the licensing, second.
Move to second, all votes in favor.
I.
I vote I, agenda item number forty seven, the recommended fine of one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars is approved, approved, plus our licensing fees. Coming agenda item number forty eight, The Smokehouse Barbecue.
Uh members of the commission, the licensee was here earlier, but informed me that she needed to leave, as such, I'm gonna move to. Continue this until the next available date, and I have no objection.
Motion to continue, agenda item forty eight, The Smokehouse Barbecue, to the next available date, second.
It's been moved to second, all votes in favor.
I.
I vote I, agenda item number forty eight is continued to the next available date. Coming agenda item number forty nine, Prima Toria.
Personal services made in this matter on November fifteen, two thousand eighteen, as such, I'm going to move for. Default judgment in the amount of one thousand two hundred fifty dollars plus the GLS, if the GLS is not filed.
Uh whether would you like that filed?
Fifteen days of service of the D N O, please.
Motion to enter default judgment in the amount of one thousand two hundred fifty dollars and require that the licensee submit their gross. Uh liquor sales report within fifteen days of the service of the decision in order, second.
Move to second, all votes in favor.
I.
I vote I, agenda item number twenty, uh forty, forty nine is approved, uh. Uh one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars is approved, plus the um. Gross liquor sales report will be filed within fifteen days of receipt of the decision and order. Coming agenda item number fifty, Ulamana Golf Links.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and the Commission. My name is Sunny Lee, I'm representing uh Ulamana Golf Course.
And how would you like to plead today, you could admit, deny, or plead no contest? Motion to accept the adjection, second.
Move to second, all votes in favor.
I.
I vote I, agenda item number fifty, the admission of the violation is approved.
Mr. Fatah, your recommendation?
This is a first time violation, recommendation is a one thousand dollar fine plus filing of their GLS report.
Mister Lee? Yes, um. Why don't, why haven't you expired your appointment?
Uh our golf course been damaged, uh fresh water flood last April. But I'm studying working on the golf course last October, I wasn't there, but I heard. Golf, whole golf course and restaurant been damaged by water. And since that, our restaurant closed, still closed, and we forgot to file.
Okay, and um so you folks will be able to file the report? Even if, even if you're not doing any business, even if you're not doing any sales, you still need to submit a report. So even if that sale report says zero, it still needs to be filed with the commission.
I understand, and and we plan to open the restaurant as soon as possible, probably sometime in January, and. My concern is, I don't have any information at all, so I'm gonna have a help from someone else.
Who, who does have the information?
Well, uh the previous management group, they left since the golf course and restaurant closed. Without any leaving any information at all, I couldn't get any. But I understand, I'm gonna have to file the report.
Mister Lee, you are the licensee?
No, I'm a general manager.
You're the general manager, okay, so the former, uh I can't offhand bring back the name, but I do see the face. Okay, so. He had the managing contract? And you took it over?
I just hired as a general manager two months ago.
Uh huh, oh, okay, okay, so you're, you're in the form, I'm very familiar with that.
Clean up somebody else's mess.
Yeah, clearly, yeah, yeah.
Clearly. Um so, are you going to be able to file a gross liquor sales report? Are you going to be able to track down anybody that can help you find documentation from the previous licensee? Or manager?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, I met Miss Atiko before. And I was.
She's, but she cannot do anything if you don't give her anything. Yes, what Miss Atiko wears, would you like to know, possibly?
If, he cannot absolutely provide documents, what we can do is with his um company approval. We can uh project what the sales would be from based on the process amount. Which I could mostly get from the vendors. So that would be one way of estimating. With the combination looking at the history of reporting, so.
How much time do you think that will take?
Um we do have a major uh then uh wholesalers have provided us a report. By customers, so as long as they purchase from major vendors, um we can probably quickly prepare. Within a day or two, and present to um to them, the licensee, to see if we can come to the agreement.
I really appreciate that.
Uh hearing that, um uh what we will do is we'll kind of, uh my motion is to continue the penalty phase. Of this agenda item, uh to.
Well, how long, how long will it take to compile, the previous, for him to uh comply with the?
If we can have one week, agenda probably can.
One week? Okay, so we will not meet next week, um.
January third is the next hearing setting.
We can continue to January third, and you can work with Miss Reyes on filing the report. So we're, uh my motion is to continue the penalty phase of agenda item fifty to January third, two thousand nineteen, second.
Move to second, all votes in favor.
I.
I vote I, agenda item number fifty, the penalty phase will be continued to January three, two thousand nineteen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Work with the auditor and he will resolve this for you. Uh calling agenda item number fifty one, Arusho's Cold Fire Italian Kitchen.
Chair and members of the commission, um the liquor commission investigators have attempted to serve. By personal service, um as well as certified mail which came back. Return uh came back undeliverable, um they have made several attempts to serve personally, as well as posting on the business, it appears. As such, I'm going to move for default.
What's your recommended amount?
Recommended amount is one thousand five hundred dollars plus the filing of the GLS, this is a third time violation.
Ms. Goddard, do you have any information for the business that appears to be operational?
The license was not renewed, and I'm not sure if the business appears to be. Operational, but the attempts. To find this person have been unsuccessful.
Uh motion to issue a default judgment in the amount of one thousand five hundred dollars and require. Licensee to file gross liquor sales report. Within thirty days of service of this decision in order, second.
Move to second, all votes in favor.
I.
I vote I, agenda item number fifty one, the default judgment in the amount of one thousand five hundred dollars is approved. Plus the licensee will. The uh gross liquor sale, thank you, will be um. Submitted within thirty uh thirty days after service of the decision. Thank you, we're about fifteen minutes over the years, too late. Calling agenda item number fifty two, Surrender Barn Grill. Motion is carried. Okay, no, um no response?
No response, um personal service was made on November twenty nine, two thousand and eighteen, um. With the person who purports to be the previous owner of this licensed. Um as such, I'm gonna move for default in the amount of one thousand dollars plus filing of the gross liquor sale report.
Uh motion to approve a default judgment in the amount of one thousand dollars. Require the licensee to submit a gross liquor sale report within thirty days of the decision in order, second.
Move to second, all votes in favor.
I.
I vote I, um. Motion is approved, agenda item number fifty two, the recommended fine of one thousand dollars for default judgment. And the gross liquor sales to be uh completed within thirty days after the decision in order. Coming agenda item number fifty three, Central Bakery.
Um I spoke with Andrew Stewart, who was the attorney for Central Bakery, however, when I spoke with him, he said that he had been. Unable to reach any of his clients and did not believe that anyone would be um appearing today. As such, I am going to move for default in the amount of one thousand two hundred fifty dollars plus filing of the gross liquor sale report.
Uh motion to issue a default judgment in the amount of one thousand two hundred fifty dollars. Require just the licensee submit a gross liquor sale report within thirty days of the decision in order, second.
Move to second, all votes in favor.
I.
I.
I vote I, agenda item number fifty three, the default judgment of one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars is approved. Plus the licensee will file the gross liquor sale within thirty days of receipt of the decision in order. Calling agenda item number fifty four, Fat Boys Haliiva.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and the Commission. Uh Carol, I'm owner of Fat Boys Haliiva. Uh no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest, please, second.
Move to second, all votes in favor.
I.
I vote I, agenda item number fifty four, the no contest plea is accepted.
This is a first time violation, recommendation is a one thousand dollar fine plus filing of the GLS, which to date is not been filed.
Uh yeah, my my apologies, I had declined to renew the license. Uh yeah, my my apologies. I had declined to renew the license. Uh in twenty eighteen because my lease is running out soon and for lack of management and lack of uh alcohol sales. And uh because I declined the um renewal, I I kind of forgot about it.
But you are you are still open, correct?
I'm still still serving free, yes.
Uh motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars and require that licensee submit gross liquor sales report within fifteen days. Of service of the decision in order. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number fifty four, the recommended fine of one thousand dollars is approved. Plus the licensee will be required to file a gross liquor sales within fifteen days of service of the decision in order.
Please work with um our auditor to file the report.
I will, thank you.
Calling number fifty five, uh Bob Big Bear Family.
Good evening, Convention. My name is uh Joseph Wu. My last name is Dr. Hsu. I'm the uh president of Dillingham mushroom corporation.
And so how would you like to plead today?
Uh no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I I vote aye, agenda item number fifty five, the no contest plea is accepted.
This is a first time violation. Recommended fine is one thousand dollars plus filing of the GLS.
Um I filed it yesterday.
Oh, I'm sorry. It was filed yesterday. My my apologies.
Has to be heard. Okay, um uh good evening, your um commissioners. Um I do apologize. Um we've had some setbacks. Um we have a business in Kilihi and sometimes it's challenging. Um we did have an arson um uh occur on us. We filed the the police report. Uh we were unable to find the person, but uh some of our records were damaged and um uh flooding occurred. As as far as I know, so um the notice and some of the records I think were missing, but we were able to um uh piece together the records. And found it yesterday, so do apologize. It is a first offense. I think um yeah. Ask if we can suspend the sentence. We are having a difficult time um uh keeping up.
Sir, should I hear about the arson movement that occurred?
I'm not sure. It was um it was this year, earlier this year.
Before summer? Before summer?
I I I don't recall, but the record was damaged. It would it was it was reported in the newspaper. We filed a.
Can you get us to hear about that?
Have you been able to get up and running again?
Uh yes, we are able to get up and running um uh.
Um hearing that, um my motion is to issue a letter of recommendation. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number fifty five, a letter of recommendation will be issued.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Commissioner.
On agenda item number uh fifty six, Tassukiji Sofudo Genshin.
Members of the commission, this.
That's my joke.
The licensee, attorney for licensee has submitted a written plea.
What is this plea? No contest, no contest.
Sorry.
Uh motion to accept the no contest plea and waiver of appearance in written form. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, uh agenda item number fifty six, the no contest plea is accepted uh and its appearance is waived.
Thank you. Um recommended fine is one thousand dollars.
And have they filed?
Yes, they filed on November twenty sixth, two thousand eighteen.
Thank you. Uh motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number fifty six, recommended fine of one thousand dollars is approved. Calling agenda item number fifty seven, Champs. Yes, Champ, due to a conflict, I'm gonna have to recuse myself from agenda items fifty seven and fifty. Thank you very much. Chair, for the time, I also have a conflict of interest on the occasion, fifty seven and fifty one. Very good. Thank you, Chair. So let's go to. Calling agenda item number fifty seven, Champs.
Good afternoon again, uh Chair members, Commissioner Keat, HU, L I C T two. My right is Bryson Bukowski, last name E U. K O S T. I interrupt, uh we have no contest for item number fifty seven.
Motion to accept the no contest plea. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number fifty seven, the no contest plea is accepted.
This is a first time violation. Recommended recommendation is a seven hundred dollar fine.
Uh if I may explain what happened. Uh the report was filed on time by the accountant on July thirty first. The problem is the accountant did not include the payment of three thousand one hundred fifty three dollars and fifty seven cents. The accountant did not inform my client or me. I got an email from her on August thirty showing what the gross liquor sales report was. And at that point, no payment at the end of the page. I then looked at the report, called my client and said the report is incorrect because it looks like. She simply took a forty percent fleet sales estimate off the total of sales, which is incorrect. It was impossible. I then called my client, told him this is not a correct gross liquor sales report. Uh I spoke to the auditor on September sixth. The auditor said, you need to correct this. My client got the literal figures from the P O S system on September eighteenth. I received those figures on September twentieth. The gross liquor sales report was filed September twenty first, payment was. So basically, what we had is an accountant that did not contact my client. Did not and the accountant was specifically instructed to send me the figures first so I could check them. I did check them. The figures were incorrect. Called the liquor commission, says they're not correct. I gotta correct it. And we filed it directly from the P O S information that we had. The additional payment was three thousand one hundred fifty three dollars and fifty seven cents, which is substantially more than what the accountant.
Mr. Fatah, is this the and you confirm that this is accurate representation?
Um as far as um as far as my email correspondence with the company. Um we did not make a a a decision to change the status until August thirtieth. Um on August twenty twenty first, she did mention that she spoke with Mr. Haraguchi. And Mr. Haraguchi from the era. So and then we need to correct it. So we gave another nine days. Hoping that they all hustling and turning in. However, that did not happen. As of August thirty, um we made a call to check the status. And just also that um we make multiple um notification effort to inform licensee. And those uh notifications are not made to the accountant, but to the licensee's address. Just.
I I agree with all of that. His rights was kind enough to email me the exchange she had with the accountant. And I will confirm that she gave the accountant every single opportunity. Um I do not know if, in fact, I this contractor did not talk to Mr. Haraguchi until the twenty first. When I talked to him on the thirtieth, she had made no communication with Mr. Haraguchi.
Well, I'm sorry that this happens, but uh licensee is strictly um.
Responsible.
Responsible for compliance. Uh and you think everything everything straightened out with the accountant going forward?
Well, she's fired. You kidding me?
All right.
I mean, were you able to recover any fees? Well, I I don't I I honestly don't know what Mr. Haraguchi is gonna do, but I'll be honest, it's not the first time I've had an issue with him. So it's, you know. I I mean, I I can't express in words, but somebody lies to me, which she did. You know, and I gotta go do the gross liquor sales report. It's like, what are you charging this different person for? And I understand, you gotta oppose the fine. I just wanna make sure you understand what they did, what I had to do. Because I'm not happy with the outcome, so I think the bottom line is Mr. Bukowski stayed in the building. Well, he doesn't know about it. He doesn't know about the next.
Well, uh good luck. Um motion to approve the recommended fine of seven hundred dollars. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh I vote aye, agenda item number fifty seven, the recommended fine of seven hundred dollars is approved. Calling agenda item number fifty eight, correct? Yes.
Yes, sir.
Champs?
Yeah, uh Kiu Chi, representing licensee. To my right is Bryson Bukowski. Enter plea no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number fifty eight, no contest plea is accepted.
This is a first time violation of this type. Recommended fine is two hundred fifty dollars.
Uh this is a situation, my client changed P O S systems, therefore changed the process. Did not get it approved before they changed P O S system, ultimately got it approved.
Motion to approve a recommended fine of two hundred fifty dollars. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number fifty eight, the recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Bukowski.
Thank you.
Mr. Bukowski for coming.
Calling it, could we have uh Commissioner Lee and Commissioner Nia Shiro back on the D S? Thank you so much. Agenda item number fifty nine. Paisley Meeery.
Um I spoke with Mark Kawata, who is counsel for Paisley Meeery or his office. Um he was unable to be here this evening. As such, he requested that we continue this hearing to January third for contested hearing. I have no objection.
Motion to continue agenda item fifty nine, Paisley Meeery, to the next of, I'm sorry, you want to next the?
January third.
January January third, two thousand nineteen. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I I vote aye, agenda item number fifty nine is continued to January third, two thousand and nineteen. Calling agenda item number sixty, administrative action report for October. You are ratifying?
Um motion to ratify the administrative actions report for October two thousand eighteen. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number sixty, the administrative action report for October two thousand eighteen is ratified. Calling agenda item number sixty one, administrative matters.